To our staff, we would be happy to hear you when the case comes up to be heard. And Commissioners, first order of business is approval of the October 11th minutes. Move approval. Okay, we have a motion and second to approve the October 11th minutes. Cast your votes. Minutes are approved. Thank you. Continuance requests, Russell?
We have three uncontested requests for continuance. Item 21, PUD 1449, a request to defer that indefinitely. Items 22 and 23, which are PV 084 and C 6397, have both been withdrawn.
Did anyone come today to talk to us about any of those items, 21 through 23, on our agenda?
Move the uncontested continuance.
Second. We have a motion and second to approve the uncontested continuances. Cast your votes. Those are approved.
There's one new request for a continuance, item 10, which is C 6394, request to continue until November the 8th.
Again, did anyone come to talk to us about item 10 today? Motion? Move the new request? Okay, we have a motion and second to continue item 10. Cast your votes. Are there other continuance requests? Dennis?
Yes, Mr. Chairman, I would like to request that we continue items 17 and 18. We have met since we last discussed this, but we are continuing our efforts to find a resolution to these issues. And I'm going to move that we continue the case for two months. I believe that both the applicant and the neighbors are in agreement with that approach.
Mr. Box? Okay, thank you. Anyone else want to address us on 17 or 18 before we vote? Okay, motion? Commissioners?
Move continuance of item number 17 and 18.
Okay, we have a motion to continue the two items. Cast your votes. Those are approved. Are there any continuance requests from the public today? Okay, thank you. We'll go on to the consent docket.
We have the two items on the consent docket today. Item one is CE 834, and item two is C 6395.
Same question again. Did anyone come to talk to us about items one or two on our agenda today?
Move the consent.
Second. Okay, we have a motion and second to move the consent docket. Cast your votes, and that's approved. Thank you.
On items requiring separate vote, item three is ABC 766. It's an application by Ray's Sub and Pizza for an ABC one at 7640 Northwest Expressway, Ward one.
Is the applicant here? Could you give us your name and address, please, for the record?
My name is Andrew Ray Manaher. The address, 7640 Northwest Expressway, Suite 111, Oklahoma City, 73132.
Are you open yet, or are you just getting ready to open?
No, we're still under construction. Should be open within a week and a half.
Okay. Commissioners, no one has signed up? Move approval of the application. Okay, we have a motion and second to approve item three. Cast your votes, and item three is approved. Thank you.
Thank you very much.
Item four is ABC 767. It's an application by B D and E Partners, I-40 LLC, for an ABC two at 6500 Southwest Third Street, Ward three.
Your name and address, please.
Nick Bomar, 17405 Bronze Lane, Oklahoma, or Edmond, Oklahoma, 73012.
And again, are you open now, or are you?
No, we are waiting for zoning. As soon as that's approved, we'll start construction.
Okay.
We haven't even started construction yet.
Okay, Commissioners, no one's signed up? Move approval. We have a motion and second to approve item four. Cast your votes, and you're approved. Thank you.
Thank you.
Item five is PUD 1472, an application by GFW Enterprises to rezone 10900 Northeastern Avenue from R1 Single Family to PUD 1472, Ward seven.
My name is Michael Laird. My address is Suite 1800, 20 North Broadway, Oklahoma City, 73102. I'm the attorney for the applicant, GFW Enterprises, Inc., for this PUD. By the way, also in attendance are Mr. Brad Winery, who is the principal of the applicant, and also the design specialists Larry Hersel and Nick Archer from HSE Architects, if you have any questions with regard to the request.
Commissioners, no one other than parties associated with the applicant are signed up, which would be the architect and so forth, so if you have design questions, that's fine. Otherwise... Michael, did you say you agreed with the TE on the specific site plan?
Excuse me?
Do you agree with the TE?
Yes, yes.
The site plan, that you have to submit a site plan?
Yeah.
Okay.
There's no other protests. I move that we approve the application.
Okay. We have a motion and second to approve item five. Cast your votes, and it's approved. Thank you.
Thank you, gentlemen.
Item six is C 6313. This is a revised preliminary plat of Falling Springs, Ward eight.
Good afternoon. I'm Kendall Dillon with Crafton Toll, representing the applicant, and this is an application for a preliminary plat on 84 acres with 294 lots. We've got about 16 acres of common area, so that yields about a 3.5 dwelling units per acre density. We are in complete compliance with the current zoning, which is a PUD, not asking for any variances, so like I say, we're in compliance there. We did, when we originally submitted this, we had an additional entrance further to the west, and if you guys recall, last meeting, there was a lady that showed up to express some concerns. We've visited with her since, and if you'll notice, we have removed that access, so that we're limiting ourselves to the two accesses further back to the east. And so I've met with a couple of the adjacent property owners out there, and to my knowledge, I think that we've kind of answered their questions. So we're in agreement with the TEs and would ask for your approval.
Kendall, 145th Street will no longer connect to the west. Is that what you're saying?
It's the furthest... No, no, no. What you see now is exactly what we're proposing to build. When we originally submitted it, we had an additional entrance further to the west that's not shown on your map. That was the issue with some of the property owners, and that's, to work with them, that's what we've deleted.
Okay, and you're in agreement with all the TEs?
Yes.
No one's signed up, Commissioners? We have a motion and second to approve item six. Cast your votes, and it's approved. Thank you.
Item seven is S PUD 685, application by Austin Rogers Dollar General Stores to rezone 900 South Harrah Road from R1 Single Family to S PUD 685, Ward four.
Good afternoon. David Box, 522 Callcord Drive, here on behalf of the applicant. Also with me is Bob Gage, and also Mr. Rothrock, who's a property owner. If you'll remember, this application was continued from the last planning commission docket because there was a 4-4 vote. Since that time, Mr. Rothrock, who's a property owner, has gone and spoken to the neighbors in that area, and what you see, I believe, before you is a letter with 10 signatures who are here or who have written in support of this application. Now, the last time there was a protest petition was somewhere around 133 signatures, but what that petition lacked was any signature with any address. It is our belief that what happened was the convenience store immediately to the west put up a protest signet, or protest petition, had people sign it, and so various people that just happened to be driving through the area to get gas, beer, or cigarettes, which is what they sell at the store, may have signed that. Now, this proposal is for a spud, and what we've done is we've taken out every single use except for the only use we need, and that's in keeping with what this planning commission has wanted in the past. So we've limited just the single use. We've been specific on our architecture. We've been specific on our building setbacks. The site is currently zoned R1, which would allow one-acre residential. This hard corner at 89th and Harrah, we do not believe would be appropriate for two one-acre residential lots. Now, the staff has indicated that this is out of conformance with the southeast sector plan, and in our opinion, when you look at the southeast sector plan, it's important that we use the plan as a tool, but what we have to do is look at each parcel on an individual basis and determine whether or not that plan makes sense on this piece of property. And when you look at this piece of property, we believe that limited commercial use to serve the rural residents of this area is appropriate. You have some commercial, or excuse me, residential to the south. You have some residential to the west that you're going to see some pictures of here momentarily, and so currently, you have to drive a long way to access any services that the Dollar General store will provide. And so in our opinion, that this store will provide a much-needed retail stop for a lot of these rural residential people. I'm here to answer any questions. I would note, the TEs, there was two of them. TE number one deals with site-proof screening. We are in agreement with that. We will provide a six-foot stockade fence around the perimeter. The second TE deals with a sign. I think the application asked for a 20-foot sign. We are fine with a monument sign. We would request we have a 10-foot monument sign because of the grade as you're coming from the south towards the north on Harrah Road, but other than that, I'm here to answer any questions, as well as Mr. Gage and Mr. Rothrock.
Commissioners, Mr. Rothrock is the only person signed up. He's the landowner.
Save it.
Yes, sir.
So on the application, when you say that the following use will be the only use permitted, and that only use is a Dollar General store?
Yes.
So if anything else would come in, then we'd have to look at it separately?
Well, the use unit is the retail use unit, which would allow the Dollar General store.
Yeah.
The zone... Yes, correct.
But it's retail, but Dollar General only?
Well, I believe the way that the zoning would work is any of the retail. I don't think we could, and I defer to Mr. Brummett, but the spud, we have to provide for the use unit, not necessarily the end user.
Okay. And you did indicate that you would be okay with a site-screening fence on the east and on the south?
Yes, sure. The site plan we submitted shows a six-foot stockade fence.
Okay. And do we have anybody to speak in opposition?
No. Mr. Rothrock, do you want to add anything?
Sir?
You need to come to the microphone, if you would, and give us your name and address. This is recorded, that's why we ask you to come to the microphone.
My name is James Rothrock. I live at 4700 Shelley Scott Drive in the Choctaw area and own this landing question. Commissioners, thank you for hearing me once again. I came today due to the legwork that I put in forth this last few days on this petition to answer any questions that you may have of it. The residents that are on that signature ballot there were the houses that are outside that 300-foot limit. Those people evidently did not send any opposition letters, so what I did, I took it upon myself to go a little farther out to the neighbors most affected by it. If you look on that, it's the landowners, the residence owners, directly to the south and directly to the east of there, and for the people that come to the door that I caught outside and just visited them briefly about it to explain it, they were more than happy to sign this as you see in front of you. They look forward to it. In fact, one gentleman said, "Can we get a McDonald's?" And I said, "Well, that's, we're not going to do that." No, sir, that's not it. So I'm just here to talk briefly and answer any question about the unique characteristics of this corner. It is a hard corner. It's a commercial corner. It's very busy, and like I have said two weeks ago, is Dollar General seems to be a pretty good fit for this. It's not anything other than that in my eyes, and I don't think anything else would go there. So it's a good fit for the community, and I think that the residents out there would really appreciate this.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Mr. Chairman, if there's not any opposition to the application, I'll make a motion to approve.
We have a motion and second to approve?
Sorry, is that with the fence being from 8 to 10?
10.
Yeah, the fence, I'm not assuming that that was part of it, yes.
Okay, everyone understand the motion? Cast your votes, and it's approved this time. Thank you.
Item eight is C 6389. This is a preliminary plat of Cobblestone Curve, Ward eight.
Tim Johnson with Johnson Associates, representing the applicant. Also here is Mr. Mark Dale, who also is the applicant. This is a preliminary plat of, for single-family detached residential north of the existing Pebblestone Collector Street. That was built as part of Cobblestone, Section 2, and we back up to Memorial Road, which is the two-way frontage road to the turnpike, and as you know, Council Road is now under construction to widen it and to improve it, as well as new signals at the turnpike overpass, so there's a lot of development and improvements going on in this area. Recently, a sewer line was brought south for Paycom, which took this whole area off of a lift station, which now allows it to develop freely into the urban drainage system. One of the issues on this site, as part of the staff's comments, was that the old PUD that covered the site... There's actually two PUDs that cover this site, 361, which is the original PUD that goes all the way down to Hepner Road, and then PUD 1175, which was a more aggressive PUD that included commercial on the corner, multifamily uses. Those overlapped this property that's now going to be all single-family detached. One of the items that came up in our review with the staff was that that pad, both of these pads included comments to extend a collector road north to Memorial Road. Of course, when 361 was done, the turnpike wasn't in at that time, but it's not desirable for this addition to go that way. Our traffic analysis indicate that, you know, the route, that is the collector street that was installed, carries the traffic very well, and access to Memorial Road could be considered a deterrent to the development of this area. So that's why we have applied with the staff to downzone this area to straight R1, and that application was made after the review and comments from the staff, so that's set to be heard in the future, and given the fact this is a preliminary plat, we would ask that this be considered as a preliminary plat. Obviously, if the zoning doesn't go through and we have to redesign it, we won't come forward with a final plat, but this is under a tight time constraint. The developer has a builder that's anxious to begin as soon as possible, so we want to keep the process moving forward if we can. With regard to the TEs, TE number two, obviously, is the one I just addressed. TE number five, we have provided that letter talking about the common area. We're going to provide a large common area as part of this first phase. It'll include a pool and clubhouse right at our entry gate. And then item number seven discusses sidewalk on Memorial Road. We understand we can't bury that at this stage, but we may go to the Board of Adjustment and ask for that to be waived. There's no other sidewalks along Memorial. I don't know that we'd want to encourage anybody to walk around on Memorial at that stage, so anyway, I'd be happy to answer any questions.
Tim, is the land immediately south of this site still owned by the same developer?
Yes. Not my developer.
Oh, you're applicant?
Right.
Okay.
Tim, are you still the engineer on the properties to the west?
Not technically. We were on that phase that was developed and final-platted, and then it went belly up, and there's one house in there that's boarded up. We haven't been in contact with them short of trying to talk to them about an easement to allow this development access to the new sewer, but at this point, they don't have anything going forward, I think.
Thank you.
Are you anticipating gating this?
No.
Are there, will they be private streets or public streets?
Public is the way they're set up right now. Private? I'm sorry, I misspoke.
That's why I read, but I want to be sure.
You're right. Yeah, they'll be private gated. The note was in there to make sure they're labeled correctly. Wrong plat, sorry.
So what we're giving up is what was negotiated in the two PUDs in order to go forward with this as you're applying for it?
That's correct, and I think that with the use being strictly R1 at this point, it's more apropos. Obviously, if we had a more intense usage, you'd want that draw out to the major collector being Memorial Road.
Nick?
Well, there's a couple of things to consider here. What we're giving up, as you put it, Mr. Chairman, PUD 361. Think about that for a minute, when that was.
Some of us weren't born yet.
Somewhat before our time, and 361 is one of those rather wide-open, here's a bunch of uses everywhere. What we're really getting is part of the PUD on the northeast side at R4, we're getting those R4. All R1, private gated area, so I really, I don't think we're giving up any of the training. With that, I'd move the variance on TE 3.
Okay, we have a motion and second to approve the variance on TE 3. Cast your votes. That would be approved.
And I'd move the application deleting TE 2. Second.
I have a motion and second to spoke. I thought you were trying to delete TE 2. I'm sorry.
I am trying to delete.
Okay. You want to shut up?
You want to keep it?
No.
[laughing].
I thought you misspoke when you said 3 on the first one. I apologize.
Rather than special on TEs today, Tim.
Yeah.
Second.
We'll give you a minute to think about it.
Yeah.
Okay, we have a motion and second to delete TE 2. Cast your votes. Deleted. We did the case, right? Your motion was the case to delete on TE 2. Okay.
Deleting TE 2.
Thank you.
Go ahead.
Item nine is C 6390. This is the preliminary plat of Hidden Creek Edition, Section 6, Ward 8.
Again, Tim Johnson. I'll try to keep my mouth shut when I'm supposed to now, this time. This is a little infill, leftover piece of property. We were before you a few weeks ago on the addition to the east that you all approved, the final plat with 10 lots. This will be a continuation and truly the final piece of property north of the Hidden Creek development that can be developed without doing major work in the floodplain as residential. The neighborhood to the north, I don't know if anybody's here to speak from the neighborhood to the north, but we, I met with several of their members and spoke about the sedition. Their big concern was in, when they, when the developers sold the land, not the neighbors, but the developers sold the land, they entered into an agreement with the buyer to have a conservatory easement that impacts the north 50 feet of our property. And I apologize, this yellow is really faint, but it's this north 50 feet, and we have met with them and talked to them about the way that is drafted. It also includes the ability to walk behind there, a walking trail. The problem with that, that nobody in the neighborhood up here can actually get there without traversing the creek, and there's no way to traverse the creek. So in talking to the neighbors, we want to honor the conservancy portion of that. In other words, we won't build beyond that line, we won't fill beyond that line, we won't remove any trees beyond that line, but we asked them if we could modify the document. It's a private document between the two property owners, and so they're working that out, and we intend to have that worked out before the final plat's heard. So the way the staff report's written, we agree with the TE. Obviously, it's a limited number of lots. They're going to be in concert with what's been developed in Hidden Creek, not so much the cottage units to the immediate south of this, but more what was called the park further south, that size of home, 2,500 square feet, which is very, complements the neighborhood to the north, and we are providing detention. We've provided a letter with regard to the protection of Martin Nature Park, and we do agree with all the TEs.
Tim, as you go south, or as you drive in to get to Jasmine Lane, in the area to the south, are there sidewalks on both sides of the street coming up to where it joins this specific tract?
There is not at this point. There's a note on the plat, though, that there will be.
Both sides?
I can't answer that. I think it says, I'm pretty sure it says sidewalk period.
Tim, the only way into this place is going up Hidden Creek and then up Deepwood and then 128 into that area?
That's correct, and this is a part of a gated community.
Okay, the community that you're working with is going to be gated?
Yeah, it's part of the existing, where it says Hidden Creek, Section 5, that's gated at 128 Street, and this will be...
Okay, so that's the reason why that's a collector street?
Yeah, it's a boulevard type of an entry, and we also plan on sprinkling these homes for providing fire protection.
Okay, so that is what's going to be my next question. Okay, thanks.
As we agreed to in Section 5 as well.
It's going to take the fire truck pretty good distance to get up there.
Right, we recognize that and the need to provide fire suppression for these homes.
I thought it was interesting also that where it's Maiden Lane and Deepwood, how in the world is that part of your deal too? Is that...
No, the plat, this drawing doesn't indicate it, but the plat that you all approved, Deepwood Creek, will connect to where that cul-de-sac is between lots 7 and 8.
Oh, I see.
And that's, that was approved in the plat as part of an ED to provide a street stub up to that addition.
Nick, anything?
Only one real quick clarification point. Tim, talk to us about TE 3, the request for variance on the sidewalk.
Well, the, we, in the previous additions, I think south of here, we asked for a variance, but I believe in Section 5 it was approved. There's a note on the plat. Is that correct, Eric? There's no note on the plat? We had this conversation. I apologize, I didn't bring the plat with me, but... Right, we agreed to it in Section 5, and so we agree to have sidewalks in this section too.
So we can...
One side or both sides is, I think?
One side is enough.
Yeah, that's...
Right. We would ask that we just have sidewalks on one side.
But, so we can delete TE 3?
Unless it needs to be varied to have sidewalks on one side only?
Oh, well, okay. Varied for one side only?
Okay.
With that, I'll move the variance on TE 2.
We have a motion and second to vary TE 2. Cast your votes. That's approved, the variance, I mean.
I'm not participating in the voting. I'm abstaining on this one because of potential conflict on this, so I should have exited, but failed to, but I'm not going to vote, participate. Thanks.
Do we need to add a TE for being sprinkled?
It's in the document.
It's in there.
It's in the document, right on the first page.
Okay, I'll say it now. Okay.
Well, yes, we would, but it's there. Now I'll move variance on TE 3, line 15.
Okay, we have a motion and second to approve the variance to TE 3. Cast your votes, and that's approved.
Now I'll move the application.
We have a motion and second to approve item nine. Cast your votes, and that's approved.
Thank you.
Item 10 has been continued until November the 8th. Item 11 is S PUD 680. This is an application by SAD Enterprises to rezone 1228 and 1232 Northwest 48th Street from R1 Single Family to S PUD 680 in Ward 2.
Mr. Chairman, Dennis Box, I'm here with Gary Holmesy, and Gary Holmesy is the applicant. Gary has had his law office just to the west of this site for in excess of 30 years. The site in question is two lots that are vacant. At one point in the near future, within the last two years, one of the houses that was removed was a crack house. It was a real problem. You have in front of you a petition of support, and what Gary plans on building here is another office. It will not have any access other than the existing access that exists for his law office. There was two curb cuts. Those have been eliminated, and we have agreed that we will make the building residential in character, and... And the handout, and Cindy has a, an example of Mr. Holmesy's office at the present time, it'll be similar to that, although it could have a more pitched roof, but it'd be residential in character. We know of no protest. We believe that even though the staff has talked about a line and a conformance issue, if you look at what Mr. Holmesy has done for this neighborhood and what he plans on doing with the new building, we think that an O1-type use adjacent to residential is not a negative, but a plus. Now, the Oklahoma Clete's for Kids, as you can see, is right across the street from the existing office. On the corner, you've got Classen Dental. So this is a good example. When you look at the zoning code, it talks about O1-type uses and how they are in conformance and in harmony with residential uses. And so we decided to do a spud so we could provide for the kinds of protections that you would expect, as in parking in the rear, residential style structure, no curb cuts on the two lots, we'll use the existing curb cut. And so we're here to answer any questions, and Gary is also here.
Dennis?
Um, we, we talked about this, we talked about O1 uses. My staff report says O2. And my first question is, if, if we're limited to administrative and professional offices, we don't really need anything more than O1, do we?
O1 is fine. We are comfortable with O1.
Okay. And this is not a, or the other thing, it talks about there being one primary structure. You have any plan to put anything more than one structure? We were talking, okay, so we can just say one structure, not one primary structure. And, you know, this is not a slam dunk because of the, of the depth off of Classen, and, you know, it does give me some pause, but I think clearly these are not lots that are going to be residentially developed even as infill. I just don't see that happening in this location. They've, they've really limited it about as much as they possibly could with the curb cuts and signage, and I was going to ask, you know, you have the kind of standard language with respect to lighting, that it'll comply with the code. I would really like to see that softened a little bit and it sort of residential in appearance also, as would comport with the style of the building. But I, I really think that this is about the best we can hope for, for this location. And if there's nobody here who wants to speak in opposition to it, I'm ready to move approval.
And we would agree to add that as a TE on the lighting. It'll be consistent with the lighting that Gary has at his existing office, which.
You're not even going to twist your arm and get a couple of feet off that sign?
Russell, go ahead, you obviously have something to say.
Well, I'm, I'm sorry, Dennis, but I have to disagree. You know, we, we do have a line all the way that steps back from Classen in terms of where the commercial is. You know, we've had applications in the past that we have denied for the same reason. We think that there would be pressure to intrude into the neighborhood, and if we do this, that we're going to get additional requests for intrusion into the neighborhood. I disagree also that it wouldn't be redeveloped as residential. I know it's not in the best condition in that neighborhood at this point in time, but it has been, you know, gradually improving, and I see over time that that, that would change. I really do think that this would be, could end up being significantly detrimental to that area in the longer term, and from a planning perspective, we're strongly opposed to it.
Can I respond? You know, a couple of things. Number one, you have a support petition by the people that reside in the area. Two, I think it's disingenuous for Russell to talk about how this is going to be commercial. We're talking about very limited office, and if you look at your zoning code, when you look at uses that are set up to be compatible with residential adjacent to it, it's O1 office. So we think that this is a plus. We think the neighbors agree with us, and we'd ask your support.
I, I have to agree with Russell in the sense that I think that if we do begin to cut into the neighborhood, we will see more requests along a road like Classen, and we'll begin to have a sawtooth kind of effect in and out of the neighborhood. I agree, O1 is not C3 or anything similar in terms of how the property would be used, but the precedent is a concern to me.
But if you look at that precedent, I mean, the nice thing is, having come from a neighborhood where I raised my kids, it had O1 offices that were a part of the neighborhood, and they were a perfect neighbor. At the end of the day, they left, they kept their property up, and it was a very compatible situation, which is exactly what this will be. So I think if it is a precedent, it's a positive precedent.
Well, if I was going to want anybody to do this, I'd want Gary to do it. I mean, because I, of who he is, how he does his business, and so forth.
He appreciates that.
So it has nothing to do with that, I'm just concerned with what might follow as a result.
I think one thing that perhaps mitigates a bit on that is that we have a unique situation here where, and maybe it's not unique, maybe it'll end up later.
Well, keep using that word, if you would, please.
Yeah.
I'm serious.
Is that the access, one thing that kind of moves me a little bit, I understand the points that have been raised, is that the access here takes back through the developer, Mr. Holmesy's, existing property. Now, that, for me, versus maybe as you suggest, advancing that line back is a different situation than what we might have over here if we went to the, on 47th Street where we were behind the clinic. It's doubtful, unless the clinic came and did that access later, that you'd have a situation where they, you have a common drive back out into 48th where we might be considering additional curb cuts and otherwise. So with respect to this particular piece of property, which is the one that we're talking about, is that, that, that helps me because the access, it's almost as an extension or an outbuilding to the building that's already there, if I'm, if I'm looking at it in that context. So that's, makes this feature with this particular development a bit unique in my, in my view of it, was that lack of access or ability to access out into 48th Street.
Nick?
I agree with what, what Mike pointed out, but the other thing that, that has given me pause is, yeah, I don't want to strip out neighborhood, and I don't want it commercial. I don't see this as being commercialized, I see it as being residential type office with not much traffic. I'm also very familiar with the area, my son owned rental property of lot 4 of this, frankly, posed a, posed such a problem. I see this as an addition to the neighborhood, not a detriment. If this type of construction is done, it may very well be incentive to the people along 48th Street East to redevelop that residentially better than it is now. Believe me, if you've driven it, it's not real good right now.
No, I drive it, agree.
So I think this being a plus to the neighborhood, I'd second Dennis' motion.
I want to be clear about this too. I don't necessarily disagree with what Russell is saying. I, I wouldn't want to see this move on down this street. It, it's only because of the very real limitations that they're placing on this that I would even consider it. The, the depth off of Classen does give me some pause, and I don't mean to dismiss it or disregard it. But, you know, I think we do have to take into consideration and take seriously the idea of step-down zoning. This is O1, it's further limited, O1, and it's further limited to a single use, you know, they're limiting their access and so on. I, I, I wouldn't, I wouldn't take, you know, straight zoning at this location, and I, I wouldn't even consider this if it didn't have these controls on it. So I, I don't want you to think that I am, you know, dismissive of the arguments you're making. I'm, I agree with them, but I think at this particular location, I can live with this.
Let me just weigh in on, and I'm going to agree with everybody. This is a, it is a dilemma, because ordinarily, I would absolutely agree with the staff and say no, because this is encroaching on a neighborhood, et cetera. Like Commissioner Gales said, this particular street needs improvement. The, the, the concept of what's going to be built is going to be a residential type structure. Parking is in the back, it doesn't have a backyard, it has parking, but that's all in the back. You've got setbacks, you've got a residential facade, et cetera, and, and it, this may be one of those exceptions to a really strong rule that I have, that this should not be done, because you're going further into the neighborhood and it shouldn't be done. But in this case, in this isolated case, for this purpose solely, I think that I can support it and, and not disagree really with what the staff is saying. However, mark my words, the person down the street, the next block, the next block, the next block are going to hire Mr. Box and say, well, you've already done this, we can do it, we can do it to our place. And so the encroachment down the block on Classen is in the picture, it's in play now if we approve this. I, I can support it, but, but just get ready for me to say no for the rest of them down the block, because I won't do it, you know.
I think that may be appropriate. It depends on what the application looks like again.
There were factors with this particular application that tilted me a little bit in favor of it. It's still a very close call with me, and, you know, I think that those are, these are those that we have to take in this particular circumstance. And, you know, hey, maybe it's not the end of the world if this neighborhood trends O1 between Classen and Western, or moving that way. I, I, I don't know. It may. I, I mean, between 47th and, you know, there's significant office structures all up and down here, you approach and, you go in varying limits back into this neighborhood. You know, I, maybe that's, maybe it's a niche market. I, I can't predict that, but in this particular case, I'm, I'm on board.
Anything further? We have a motion and a second to approve.
Changing to O1.
Cast your votes. It's approved.
Can I just add one other point in terms of the residential appearance? Would that be residential that takes account of what the architecture of that neighborhood is rather than 122nd and Memorial?
Yes, the residential will be similar to the style that Mr. Holmesy's office is now, or he might even have more of a pitched roof than exists with, with the existing office. But between planning commission and council, I will make sure that, that you are handed a copy of the plans, and then you'll have the opportunity to discuss it with the council.
I'm just trying to get it to blend with the architecture of the neighborhood.
I think what you're saying is you don't want the straight-up pitched roofs. Yeah, the pitch may need to, I, I get your point, it may need to come down versus Turtle Creek. Commissioner Gales' office, which are pretty straight-up high-pitched, high-pitched roofs.
Yeah, and we'll, we'll have a little sketch plan before council.
All right. Item 12 is SPOD 686. This is an application by C. Scott Woodard to rezon 13,300 Northeastern Avenue from PUD 1354 to SPOD 686 in Ward 7.
My name is Charles Allen, Allen Engineering. Scott Woodard is also here to ask, answer any questions. This spud is, is just really to augment the existing PUD and allow a, a garage access from Rively Road to the south. I think we have a few protest letters, and I don't know if they showed up to speak today or not.
No one has signed up. We do have the protest letters, but no one signed up.
I would like to clarify a couple of things, I guess. Item, or TE number, I think it's, number 6, section 9.5. The replanning of spud shall be required prior to, and we'd like it to be issuing of a certificate of occupancy. And then also to clarify, in the design statement that we received from, from staff, they had an item 9.15 that required a specific site plan. We've already issued, or we've already submitted for a building permit, and the elevation that you have and the site plan that you have is what will be, is being built. I, I think they're all the text in the design statement.
Housekeeping things, I agree, but my question is, do you agree?
I agree all the.
With the exception of the two you.
Yes.
You pointed out.
Yes.
Thank you.
Okay, no one has signed up.
Come on, I'd like to talk to, just one comment. You know, in the regular PUD, it, one of the negotiation pieces was that we would not have any access on Ripley Road, because, and, and that was one of those pieces that the residents agreed to, you know, when we, we put in the PUD to do this commercial.
I think what we're trying to do is just garage access. We're not trying to provide access to the rest of the development exactly. This will be specifically to the garage. It's a, it'll be gated.
But let's go back to my question of the 18TE. And I know they're mostly housekeeping, I got that, and you have exceptions with the two. But this is a, a fairly recent, recently negotiated.
Correct.
And as I recall, it was a, kind of a borderline call at the time.
It was.
Okay? And now, I was a little surprised to see it come back, wanting to change what was so tightly negotiated, and even though they're, they're somewhat housekeeping TE's, to have 18TE's attached to an application that we, we just recently approved. That gives me pause. Charles, did you visit with these people in the neighborhood? Have you visited with them and, and tried to share with them what you exactly are trying to do?
I'm Scott Woodard, and I did try to meet with the three homeowners that sent the letters in. There's four letters, and two of them were from the same homeowner. I met with, I was able to meet with one of them. I've left my card at the other house, or other two houses, trying to meet with them. I've, I've shared with them what I was trying to do, and that I wasn't going to provide access to the primary parking from this entry. It was strictly for the occupants of the building. And one of his big concerns is he wants a storm shelter inside his garage, or inside his space, and that was, that was one of the reasons we added the garage to the space, was to provide a storm shelter within that building. The one homeowner that I talked to, we talked various ideas, and that's where.
How many residents are you talking about is affected by this?
There's one primary residence that's just to the east, probably 150 feet, and that was the one that sent the two letters. That's, the other residences are farther down the road, and I don't believe we have any impact on them.
And how did that, how did that visit go with that particular resident?
She was opposed to any commercial development there. It wasn't just the fact that there was access off Rively, it was the fact that there was an office building going up and all that she was primarily opposed to.
So, Jan, I'm, I'm, this is, is there an existing structure there now? Is there, is there one to be built, or?
No, sir, there's no, there's no structures there.
No, that's right. Okay, so what are we planning to put there?
A residential type office building, similar to Turtle Creek, similar to Mr. Gales' office building. It's a residential type office building. The existing, the existing layout that we have, I believe provides for about 7,500 feet worth of office buildings, but only one is under, under planning today or, or been submitted for permit.
And so there'll be one building?
There could be up to three, based on that layout. The one building that we're talking about that will have access from Rively to the garage is just the one building shown on the south of that, that layout.
Since, since there's nothing on the property now, could you maybe look at another solution that would eliminate that access on Rively? Because like you said, this is a very new PUD, and we, it was a tight negotiation. It's kind of like, but once we got our foot in the door, now we can come back and we'll make another adjustment and.
I wasn't involved in that original PUD. I understand it was relatively new. I had, I wasn't involved in that. We have looked at, you know, various different layouts to try to accomplish the same thing. There's just not much. There's just not much.
I'm not trying to redesign your deal, and I'm certainly not competent to do that. But just looking at the diagram, the one that's on the screen, it appears that your garage structure is on the south side of the building.
That's correct.
And takes access off that objectionable street, if you will. You have a parking lot to the north. What would happen if you just lived the building configuration to the south, put the garage on the north, took access to the parking lot?
You wouldn't have the parking spaces required for the?
But you can have it on the south side.
It would take away the parking spaces that are on the north side of the building.
Well, I asked staff for providing covered garage parking. Does that not count?
I believe I was, we were informed that it would not count.
Okay, then.
How many spaces are we losing?
I believe it's eight spaces.
I was thinking it was two, just wide enough for a driveway, but I don't know.
I would be, I would be agreeable to if we could vary the parking, you know, by three or four spots, to moving that garage to the other side and eliminating this.
Let me ask you this. Right now, we're, now, would you be opposed to continuing this and work those issues out, so we don't have to try to, you hear some of the sentiment, what we're trying to get to?
I understand the sentiment. Do I want to continue it? Of course not. I mean, the short hair's right there, but I've got.
You know, would you be agreeable to continuing it then? And work out through these issues. You got 18, you got 18.
I'm not sure.
TEs, and then we got some controversies about this P.U.D. that just was put in place, and now we alternate. There's nothing built, so, you know.
I mean. If I read the protesters' letters.
I think we're only talking two weeks, right?
Yeah, two weeks. And then work out these.
I would be, I would be okay with that.
And then look at some of these alternatives that we've talked about to mitigate that situation of being on Ripley Road. And give it to staff and see what we can deal with.
How many parking spaces are required? Just out of, and how many do, how many do we have, and how many?
Well, the point is, we shouldn't be sitting here in the horseshoe trying to redesign some of this.
Yeah, no, I agree. But then the request becomes an ask. One, the application doesn't have 18 TEs, which is a little much for a one-page application of every one thing. However, then we're just asking to be consideration of varying the parking.
Well, I'm glad they're consolidating dumpsters and so forth, which they weren't doing before. Thank you, Mr. Allen.
Yeah, there's some advantages. I agree. I think it needs to go back and come back.
But the issue about Ravelry Road access, I'm agreeing with Commissioner Williams that that's really going to be a big barrier, in my opinion. I think, and others too, that we negotiated that very carefully, so let the garage get some, can we do a variance or, I don't know. But work it out. You guys can work it out, and then, but, you know, so moving favor the.
Two weeks, for two weeks.
November 8th, I believe, is.
The motion and a second to continue item 12 for two weeks. Cast your votes, and we'll see you November 8th.
Item 13 is S.P.U.D. 687. It's an application by Cat Investments LLC to rezone 13,301 South Santa Fe from P.U.D. 1089 to S.P.U.D. 687 in Ward 5.
Good afternoon. Kendall Donald with Cracked and Told, representing the applicant. And this is obviously an application to rezone a piece of property that's five acres. It's located on the west side of Santa Fe Avenue, just about 330 feet north of Southwest 134th Street. And the current zoning on this piece of property is a P.U.D. that still allows 28 C3 uses, and that's not even including the other 33 uses that have potential in terms of special use permits, conditional permits, and those sort of things. But the current P.U.D. still allows certain uses, such as eating establishments with fast food and drive-through windows, such as McDonald's. Still allows, obviously, retail sales, allows certain things such as liquor stores, childcare centers, allows for payday loan, for pawn shops, for bingo parlors, and still several uses that, that are somewhat questionable in regards to the proximity of the adjacent neighborhood. So it allows for certain uses like that, 28 uses total. In addition, the current P.U.D. allows for two access points on Santa Fe, allows the buildings to be 35 feet in height, and also allows for two pole signs to be 25 feet maximum height with 125 square feet of display area. So that currently is the zoning on the piece of property. And what our application is, is an S.P.U.D., and we're asking for three uses. We're asking for personal storage, which is obvious, that you can see on the map. We're asking for automotive equipment, cleaning, and repair, which would be further limited to one single automated car wash that you would see in the southeast corner down there. And then obviously, the building in the northeast corner would be the office with living quarters that would be associated with the personal storage. So we're asking for those two uses. We're also asking for outdoor display and sales and outdoor storage, and that use we're asking for would permit for the storage of boat trailers and RVs, which we're further limited to no closer than 500 feet from the center line of Santa Fe. So that it pretty, and it's a little bit difficult to see on the map, but we show some parking spots on the far west side of there, that that's where limiting by the spud to that particular area. So we're eliminating 25 uses permitted by right from the current P.U.D. And in addition to eliminating all those uses, we also have an architectural standard, obviously, no exposed metal, concrete. It's got to be a stucco, an artificial masonry, or something similar to that. We are, and we've also agreed to make our colors earth tones, so no bright shiny colors. We are limiting the height of the storages to 20 feet. We are asking that the house slash office and the car wash be allowed to be 25 feet high, so we need a little more flexibility there. But we've, on the storages, in regards to the roofs, we've agreed that they will be hipped or gabled, a 212 pitch minimum, 612 maximum. So we've built in those architectural standards. We've also agreed to a 15-foot landscape buffer along the north and the west. In addition to that, we'll have the site proof screening along the north and the west. And then obviously, and something else that you might notice, we've agreed to do a 50-foot building setback from the north and the west to obviously get any potential structures further away from the residents. So we've agreed to those sort of things. We have eliminated one access point, so we're going from two. We're asking for one access point, and then on the signs, we're, we're just asking for eight-foot monument signs, so we're eliminating the two pole signs. So I think if you look at those, that now we are limited down to three potential uses, everybody around knows exactly what they're getting. If you look at the fact of the signage, and then even in regards to the intensity of some of those uses, if you look at the traffic, I think on a trip generation based upon what the previous concept plan versus this, I think the traffic reduction is about 60%. So we feel like that all of those things significantly decrease the intensity of, of the current zoning, and it makes for a good plan. We did send out a, an invitation to a neighborhood meeting that was held last night. We tried to be a little proactive in that, so everybody that was on the ownership list, we sent them a meet, or a letter, met with, there was four people that showed up last night, and listened to them, and I think overall, it was a fairly positive meeting. I know a couple of their primary concerns, number one was height, which obviously, it was 35 feet. Now we're restricting it to 20 on the storages, 25 on the two buildings up front. And then the second thing, they were concerned about some fencing. And the primary concern was, is if their fence were to blow down, who's putting it back up? And we have agreed that, you know, we're responsible for the fencing. It's part of our spud to have the screening, and so that we'll make sure that that screening and that fence is maintained and up. So those were a few of the concerns that they had. Like I said, I think that it was a pretty favorable meeting, and, and that they were, at least the people that we met with, were in favor of it. And overall, we think that it's, it makes sense, and it's a good application, so we'd ask for your approval.
What kind of roof material are you proposing on a two-and-a-half, 12 pitch?
It'll be a standing seam metal roof.
Standing seam, okay.
Mr. Trump, Kendall.
Sure.
I see you landscaping on the three sides, and I know on the south side, that's commercial, it's adjoining. But what's happening on the south side?
On the south side currently is C3 zoning.
I know that.
So that we'll meet the code on the south side.
It'd be what?
We'll meet all of the city's codes in regards to any separations, landscaping, or whatever, but it's, it's straight C3 zoning, so I don't know the, any particular requirement except for building setbacks, or, and in this case, I don't think that there will be even that. So basically, we're abiding straight C3 zoning.
I mean, but what are you doing on that side?
Well, currently, we have a storage building plan to, what our plan is, is to set this storage building on the property line.
No fence, nothing in between? Fence in between?
In between, yes.
Okay, what type of fence we're going between those open spots?
You know, I don't know. I have Judy Perrin with me.
The only reason I ask that, because right now, even though it's not developed on the south side, it's still going to be very visible. I just was curious, what exactly are you doing? I know you got the back of the buildings, but then you have some openings in there, and I was just curious, what type of a?
Well, and like I say, I can see if we can get you an answer on that, but keep in mind too, that as it develops, it will not be visible. So that, and currently, like I say, I think we'd be looking probably, most likely, at some sort of a stockade or a wood fence.
No one signed up, commissioners?
I was at the meeting last night, and I thought also, as Kendall stated, just affirming what he stated, that the property owners that were present, all of which were, seemed like they were on the street, which is to the north, generally had their questions answered and with, and were in, I can say, were not in opposition. I don't know, obviously, they're not here in favor of it, but they were not in opposition of, of what they saw. I do think it's interesting that they elected to, in their application, put a single bay car wash on this. However, learning more about that, they already have a location that is at 5,300 Southeast 44th, that is basically a duplicate of this, that is very well-received from the community around them, and people like the car wash, you know, and the hours and everything. So I don't, in particular, have any objections to this. One other thing that I thought was pretty interesting, there are no dumpsters at this, which means that there's not going to be a lot of trash if somebody were to leave stuff in the storage. I mean, I just think that's a positive thing. That works well at the location that they referenced on Southeast 44th, and so if there are no objections or no protesters, I would move approval of this application.
We have a motion and a second to approve item 13. Cast your votes, and it's approved.
Thank you.
Item 14 is S.P.U.D. 688. It's an application by Diversified Oil and Gas Exploration to rezone 9,600 and 9,630 South May Avenue from P.U.D. 832 to S.P.U.D. 688, Ward 5.
My name is Dennis Box, 522 Culcore Drive, and Tim Johnson is here with me. We represent the applicant. This was formerly Jim Brewer's compound. He lived on the larger residence, and his son lived on the other residence. It's got a nice, large pond that sits behind it. It's on May Avenue, and I hate to admit it, but I have to agree with Russell on this one. He got it right, and I think I agree that we're in conformance and should be approved.
It's amazing, Dennis.
You know, our, our desire would be not to put a sidewalk in, but I'm, I understand the, you know, that's a policy decision of the Planning Commission. It would, you know, be a sidewalk to nowhere, but if we want sidewalks to nowhere, then we'll do whatever this commission says.
No one signed up?
I do know that across the street is a recently constructed daycare. Just to the south of that, there's a, another professional building. I can't recall what that is at this point, but when these two residences went up, one could only speculate why they chose those locations, and I feel, you know, now I know. But there is no access, and I don't believe, Dennis, that there will be any additional access to the residential community behind them.
That is correct.
To the east. Everything will stay the same.
Yes, sir. We do have people signed up before we go forward. Oh, I'm sorry, next case. My apologies.
Was that just for my blood pressure?
I was just trying to see if you were alert.
Those are from the planning department, please.
I'll move approval. We have a motion and a second to approve item 14. Cast your votes, and it's approved.
Item 15 is P.U.D. 1474, an application by Ben Graves to rezone 1,0700 South May Avenue from P.U.D. 169 to P.U.D. 1474 in Ward 5.
All right, thank you. My name is Matt Graves. I live at 3605 Roundwood Lane in Norman. I am representing the developer, Ben Graves. The application is to rezone approximately 11.75 acres, zone C3, to four separate tracks. Track one, eight and a half acres, rezone to R4, and three other tracks, approximately an acre each, the same zoning C3. Over the last month or so, the developers met with the city staff and some of the neighbors to address their concerns in the design statement. Some of those concerns, I will discuss here. Future signage along May, they limited height, and moved the location away from the entrance into Hunter's Place. The level of quality, currently, the zoning R4 would allow for approximately 35 units per acre. The density was reduced in the design statement to 17.8 units per acre, so approximately 50% reduction. They are limiting the stories, the number of levels of each building to two. There are no outdoor balconies on the second floor. They've also maintained a 30-foot greenbelt from the parking adjacent to the residences on the east and on the south. Incorporated into the design, 48 garages, also creating a visual buffer between the units and the backyards of the homes that are there now. The current design also results in drainage issues that exist along the southeast corner, some flooding into the yards. Limiteded the number of three-bedroom units to attract more empty nesters, young professionals, so 80% of the units are two-bedroom. The, the design standards will be in compliance with the covenants in Hunter's Place, incorporation of brick, and the same roof materials and designs. Security was also addressed in the incorporation of gated entrance, including a crash gate along the north side for emergency vehicles, and gates for pedestrian traffic to the adjacent commercial properties. Another concern, sightlining. The sightlining of the new development will be shielded from the backyards of the homes that are there now, so. And then traffic, also rezoning this from C3 to R4 would reduce the trap, potential traffic by approximately a third. So.
Any questions, commissioners? I do have people signed up once we.
One quick question. You have about eight and a half acres of R4. Cut that density to 17.8.
17.8.
Gives you a total, what, 150 units?
Well, I wish I was more involved in the actual design of this. Stephen, you remember how many I got here on the application? 150 units?
And not, you know, no change, not going over that.
No, sir. Thank you. The other commissioners? Got some people signed up. Heinian Chen first.
I'm the second. Why not? Yes.
Okay, well, Michelle Hegeman. Several of you were signed up to speak, so I would ask if someone who precedes you makes your point that you not repeat what's already been said. your point that you not repeat what's already been said. If you could give us your name and address for the record.
Michelle Hagaman, 10700 Lake Ridge Run, Oklahoma City, 73170. And I'm just here, I'm not in Hunter's Place, but I'm in Lake Ridge Run, which is right next to Hunter's Place, and I'm just here for concern of our property values. I don't know Ben Graves. I don't know where he lives. I don't know if he would want an apartment complex by his home, and I know apartment complexes are notorious for changing hands. You never know who's gonna own them. You never know if they're gonna keep them up. We've got a very nice neighborhood, and I want to fight for our neighborhood. I'm not in favor of an apartment complex coming into that area. People come and go in apartment complexes, and I'm just here to fight for our neighborhood. And like I said, I don't know Mr. Graves. I don't know what part of the city he lives in. I don't know if he's from Oklahoma, but, you know, would you want an apartment complex in your backyard? Thank you.
Thank you very much. Mr. Chen, you ready now? If you could give us your name and address, please.
Sure. My name is Heinian Chen. I live in 2809 Southwest 108th Street, which is in the Hunter's Place, right next to the proposal change. My question is, how can we just bring out a proposal which changed from O1 or C1 to R4, which significantly increased the density of the area? I just bought my house last September. Everything, you know, I buy, my wife made a decision. She searched on the internet, say, hey, this is a zip code 73170, which has the highest income per capita in the whole state. And she looked at the crime rate, she looked at a nearby school, she looked at the early wine park, said, wow, this is the best place, this is probably the nice place we can afford with the limited, I mean, with the amount we can afford. And we spent $195,000 to purchase the house. And when I received the email from our HOA person, said, we're gonna have a problem here, I said, what? No, that's not gonna happen. Because it significantly increased the traffic, the population, also increased a huge burden on the elementary school nearby. As far as I know, the elementary school, my daughter's in right now, they only offer half-day kindergarten. With the 150 apartment, no, people come in, I don't know how they can handle such a pressure with all the kids. And of course, our first concern is the property value. If I hadn't known that they would put sometimes this in the neighborhood, I would not buy the house. I would not. I'll buy somewhere else.
Thank you. Thank you very much. Wayna Van Hoff. If you'll pull my phone down and give us your name and address. Thank you.
Wayna Van Hoff, and I am a resident of Hunter's Place, 10908 South Ross Avenue. I really feel for this gentleman that just spoke. I was, my home was the third built in the original Section 1 of Hunter's Place, so when somebody talks about building something to the current covenants of Hunter's Place, we have four. I don't know whether or not that was brought up. We, as residents, have not met with this builder, and again, we're not talking about a known south-side entity like J.W. Mashburn or P.B. Odom, which would make all of us feel a lot better. We have somebody from Norman who doesn't want to do his thing in Norman, apparently. We already in Hunter's Place and Lake Ridge have been told that due to lack of resources for our South Oklahoma City Police Department, we need to rely more on the Cleveland County Sheriff's Department for our emergency needs. So you want to throw 150 new families in to absorb more resources that aren't supporting us now. And it is very upsetting, because if we wanted to be urban, we would have all moved downtown. We wanted suburbia. We want our yards. We want our space. We do not want apartment dwellers, where we pay property taxes, where we're trying to pay off our mortgages and raise our kids with a neighborhood of people that we know, we trust. And I'm here fighting for my neighborhood, too.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Mike Smith.
My name is Mike Smith. I live at 10700 South Miller Avenue. I live within 300 feet of this application. I hope you'll bear with me. I had several things I want to say, so I sort of tried to note those down. I also serve as president of the Hunter's Place Homeowners Association. As a board, we notified all 140 homeowners of this application and all the neighboring HOA boards around us, because only 73 properties are within 300 foot. So we notified 140 properties and the other neighborhoods around us. As a neighborhood, I think we wish that the land would remain vacant. We struggle with the idea of when the land will be developed rather than if. We fear the term apartments, and we know there's no guarantees in life. Do we try to work with this developer or risk what could go there with the current commercial zoning? The most critical elements that I've continually heard from my fellow neighbors is maintaining property value, compatible density, ensuring quality of life. The key qualifier for rezoning, to maintain harmony and not harm adjacent landowners, potential loss of privacy, increased water runoff. We essentially had nine business days as a receipt of this to try to proceed on all options. As a board, we presented these options to the developer and presented our concerns to the developer. We told him that items in his plan gave us cause for concern. The developer not only listened, but he made changes and further agreed to incorporate them in the planning development documents you have before you today. Their changes were put in there to the best of our ability. He attempted to allay our fears. Should the zoning pass and fail to develop the property or sell it to someone else to develop, we wrote them in, planning development to the best of our ability. What do we do? Do we try to negotiate with somebody who'll work with us? Or do we risk it's currently commercial and they don't have to talk with us? Things could happen. Based on those facts, I wish to publicly state my appreciation to the developer, Ben Graves, and his team for working with us, because they wrote information in. Based on that cooperation and the response that we received from our neighbors, as a board, we decided not to oppose this rezoning application. Thank you.
Sir?
Yes, sir.
You mentioned, Matt, item one, your concerns. They addressed many of their concerns. Have those concerns that they addressed resulted in changes in the PUD? So are the changes in the PUD reflected in what we're looking at today? Or are they proposed?
They're actually written into the PUD. The PUD specifically states there'll only be a max of 17.8 units per acre.
I see that in there.
There's 35, that's in there. The other things that we asked for, of course, privacy. The fencing, the PUD only called for six. They've agreed for an eight-foot fence all the way around the PUD, so they added that. The next thing we brought to them was three houses in the southeast corner have been, unfortunately, builders debris, tree and stuff grow up back there, that when we asked for the fire break to be mowed, they had to bring in a dozer of the current property owners. And as a result, the land changed back there, and several of those properties, when it rains, have been getting runoff. They adjusted their plans to essentially help channel that water away from it. We had dumpsters originally right against a property line on the commercial property that sits next to the residential. They've moved those now to the north center line of Track 3 and 2, away from us.
Okay, so all your concerns have been addressed and they're incorporated in what we're looking...
Yes, sir, they are incorporated.
That answers my question. Thank you.
Thank you, sir.
I may make a comment, is that your work with the developer and your comments about what the developer did in cooperation with what your concerns are, in recognition that this whole giant piece of property is all C3. I mean, that's really what was facing you, you know, that this cooperation is what we really do like to see, and I appreciate all the work that you and the neighborhood have done, as well as the developer, in coming to an agreement in, you know, in face of a serious situation with what could be put next to you. But I appreciate that.
Well, I appreciate that, and you can understand, it's difficult. I have people that do oppose this. I respect their right to oppose that, and we sent multiple emails out saying, please give us your feedback. Do you want to oppose this? Do you not oppose it? Do you want to try to work with the developer? And it's based on them working with us and the overall total responses that we received that we don't oppose it.
Before you step away, Mr. Smith, the people who are sitting here and from whom we've heard...
Yes, sir.
They're also your neighbors and your neighborhood, part of your residential group?
Some are in my neighborhood, some are in the adjacent neighborhood. Yes, sir.
Okay, thank you. Any other questions of Mr. Smith? We do have someone else to speak.
Thank you for coming down to talk to us today. Now, it's not an easy situation to find yourself in.
It's not.
Between a rock and a hard place there, but certainly we do encourage people to work with developers, and we encourage developers to work with neighbors. So, you know, from our point of view, the fact that you have done that and that they have responded is a step in the right direction. I certainly understand that there are always going to be issues with large tract of vacant land, but, you know, I think your recognition that your hope that it might remain vacant is probably not a realistic one, and that something is going to develop there, and so the question is, you know, how do you best interact with that reality? And I think you've done the right thing in terms of trying to at least voice your concerns, make them known, and, you know, give the developer the opportunity to address them, so...
Thank you. Thank you. Thank you, sir. Thank you. Ann Rogers.
Hello. I'm Ann Rogers. I live at 2821 Southwest 107th Street. My land is going to be in, have this apartment building right in its backyard. I'm frankly appalled that our board has chosen not to oppose this, and I don't think I speak for just myself. I think I speak for more than myself. Because I tend to get a little passionate about things, I prepared a statement, and I hope you'll bear with me while I use my notes. When moving to southwest, to South Oklahoma City, I put a lot of effort into finding a home in a quiet subdivision. I looked at many subdivisions. Some were easy to rule out. Too many cars parked in the street and in driveways. Poorly kept homes and yards. Too noisy, and so forth. After deciding that Hunter's Place might be the place for me, before purchasing, is this me doing this? Before purchasing, I drove through the neighborhood at different hours of the day and night. I wanted to see what was there and how things were really going when it wasn't at prime time. I asked questions of the residents. I learned the vacant field behind me, you know, is 10700 South May, was zoned for an office park or something similar. Perfect. Now Crest and other businesses have been welcomed as a new neighbor. I must have had a premonition, though, because recently my biggest fear became that someday we would hear that there would be multi-story apartment buildings planned for right behind my house. Unfortunately, that day is here, so once again, I've been driving and looking. In general, what I've noticed on my drives, and I've been looking at apartment buildings that have been around for a while, I've been looking at new apartment buildings. In general, what I've noticed is, the best close neighbors for multi-story complexes are businesses, streets, and parks, entities of that nature, where apartment buildings have been allowed directly adjacent to existing neighborhoods...
You may be a little too close to the microphone.
Am I too close? Well, I back off, and it seems like it goes away. All right, that would be better. Thank you very much. Where the apartment buildings have been allowed to back up to, where apartments have been allowed directly adjacent to existing neighborhoods, the outcome is most often pretty disastrous for the bordering homeowners. Well...
We tried.
Okay. Well, the outcome is often disastrous for the bordering homeowners. I've seen some pretty awful sites. I don't want to lose my privacy with tenants being able to see into my backyard. I don't want the other issues that come with a lot of people packed into a small space. Specifically, loss of privacy, loss of safety, loss of security, loss of tranquility, invasion of my property by high lighting, noise pollution, and from the proposed dumpsters, odors and flies, decrease in property valuations, and heavy increase in traffic in the neighborhood. I think that now, with 104th on one side and May Avenue on the other side, and a stoplight at the corner of 104th and May, that there are people cutting through from 104th, coming right up 107th and going right on out just to avoid that stop sign at May and 104th. I don't want to lose, well, I've already told you that. I don't want to lose my privacy. I may be repeating myself. Forgive me if I do. I'm really upset over this whole situation. And by the way, nobody has visited with me from anybody, either the president or any of the other board members, nor the developer, and I'm highly the most affected of all. Me and my neighbors. Did I tell you about loss of privacy and security and things? I think I did. Okay. Furthermore, across May Avenue and south of Crest is an area already zoned R4 for apartments. If this PUD 14, if this board 14, okay, if this PUD 1474 is allowed, then we have the very real potential for two apartment complexes in these quiet, single-family neighborhoods. There's land north of 104th Street already zoned for R4 and C3. The impact of apartments and businesses on that area would be minimal. We realize that someday this vacant land will be zoned for something back there. The ideal thing is the business park. There's lots of other uses that I don't think I would have any problem saying that's okay, as long as they're not two-story and can look right into my yard. A six-foot fence, even an eight-foot fence, doesn't do much for privacy. And even if they put frosted glass and no balconies on certain areas, it's still possible for them to see into my backyard. They can actually see into my back, the whole back of my house, because that's where my living is done. I'm not for this project. And I would just say that I respectfully request that PUD 1474 request for rezoning be denied.
Thank you very much. Enough of that, please. Come, no. Again, this is recorded, and no one will hear your...
Yeah, this is Heinian Chen. I live in 2809 Southwest 108th Street. I just have one sentence. I'm very surprised to hear the board that they are not opposing this, but what I heard is that this gentleman, he's moving out of the neighborhood. So whether or not there's a building, there's an apartment building there or not, does not affect, does not affect his residence anymore. That's what I want to say. Thank you.
Thank you.
Yep, you have to come to the microphone if you want to say something. You won't pick up sound back there.
Okay, what I, all I wanted to say was, I didn't see on the agenda that there had been any letters in protest of this project.
We have yours.
You do have mine.
Yes, ma'am.
Okay, well, I had brought some in case you had not received.
No, they're here in our packet.
All right, but thank you very much.
Thank you. Commissioners? Mr. Graves, anything in response?
I just wanted to clarify one point is that Ben Graves is an experienced developer. He's also a very well-known in some areas architect, so that we have tremendous amount of control over the project, over the quality of the project. The intention is to hold this property as a long-term investment, as some of the other development projects have been held as long as 1978 when they were constructed. So, there is no intention to construct this property and quickly flip it to another owner. That is it.
Thank you.
I've got a couple of questions. On the buildings along the south property line, approximately, how far is that from the residential property lines to the south? I know it's 25 feet, and then your garages, and then a street, and then there's some other separation there also.
Yes, sir.
You know about how far that is?
Yes, sir. What you have there, I want to make one other point I don't think was clear, is that the height of the parking spaces were limited to a maximum 30 inches above the existing property line. So, what you have there is a 30-foot setback from the property line to the parking lot, and then the garages, which plate height is probably nine to, eight to nine foot, and then the pitch of the roof, and then, what is that, across the parking lot, I don't know, 60 feet or so? And then, so, you're looking at in excess of 100 feet from the property line to the first unit.
And are those, both of those buildings that are closest, are they proposed to be two-story?
They're all two-story.
They're all two-story.
And none of them have outdoor balconies.
And what about the windows? Are they clear, opaque, you know, some of these requirements on overlooking the backyards, on the back windows of those buildings, and then the ones that be facing the other residents on the east side? What do you do with the, like, the windows where you can just look down?
Let's say, for instance, on the, in your packet, it would be the building that is closest to the C3 southwest corner, there are no windows on that end of the building that face the property to the south.
South. Where am I?
Yes, that one there. On that, on those ends of the buildings, there are no windows.
That corner?
I believe the design of the windows have been included in the design statement. They would be standard residential type.
No windows, no windows. That's 109 feet. That's.
One point about building height is, if they built two-story houses along there, we got two-story apartments. I mean, we wouldn't be requesting opaque glass for two-story houses. Right? I mean, they got a two-story building limit. So, if they built nothing but single-family houses along the side that abuts back to the residents, we wouldn't, we would be going, gee, what a great deal.
Well, Mike, that's a good point. You know, I live in a two-story house. My next-door neighbor has a two-story house. And yes, we can look at one another.
Right. And my neighbor behind me has a two-story house, and he looks into my backyard.
Well, but we have a common property line and a stockade fence. Here, you have what appears to be, all along there, the residential boundaries, in excess of 100 feet, before you get to a structure.
Yeah, right.
And, you know, the window deal issue, to me, is not an issue. That's, that's pretty far, 100 feet far.
This is, the property exists the way it's currently zoned, is C3 and R4, according to the, right? Excuse me, just, C3 under, okay, I'm sorry, I was looking down on the west.
The south 200 feet is O1, and the remainder is C3.
Okay. The south 200 feet?
Yes, which would be the right side.
The right, okay, that's what, okay, thanks, JJ.
I also have a question on this, on this document. It said on the site data, total site subject to survey, you have R4 and R3.
Oh, yeah, I noticed that this morning. It's supposed to say C3. Drafts person made an error there.
Oh, that's a mistake.
Yes, sir.
Okay.
During code analysis this morning, they were like, doesn't fit R3, it's like, it's because it's C3. So, sorry about that.
JJ, what's the by right today? Could you tell me what maximum building height? Well, I mean, we already know that right now that they could build, as it's zoned, up to, what, 35 units per acre?
Yeah, 35 units an acre for straight R4.
That would be on the south? Is that what you're telling me? Or is that the?
Oh, wait a minute, isn't it zone C3 on the north, and the south 200 feet is O1?
Right.
So, it's, there's no R4 there now at all?
No, R4, current R4 aspect, too.
Okay. What would the maximum building height be on C3?
C3?
Is that 35 feet?
It's 35 feet, but it also will stair-step up as you get further away from residential.
Right.
So, it could be as tall as six stories as you get out towards the street.
And what does, what would the building setback be on the south and east property lines that are but the houses there? How far back, or how close to those property lines could a builder today build something?
30 feet.
So, a builder today could go in and build C3 within 30 feet of the property line and stair-step that up from 35 feet to a six-story building, currently as it exists? Okay, thank you.
Which could be any C3 use. It could, pick it.
I've got another question. What are the limits?
It's basically all C3 uses, with the exception of gasoline sales, adult entertainment, and mini-storage.
So, it's drive-through? It's a picket?
See, everything in C3.
The reason that I wanted to state it for the record was because I don't know that, that we're all aware of what they could do right now. Without coming before the planning commission, anybody could purchase this piece of property and ask for it to rezone. That's the right of the applicant of that. So, anybody could come do that. I just want to make sure that that's well-known. The, this is a very interesting site. It is very close to my residence. I, I mean, I've, I've said to numerous people today that, with the exception of the Moore Sewer Treatment Plant, this has given me the most communication via email or other. I have met with the developer of this application one time. I met with him a second time with the, with two of the board members for Hunter's Place. They were more than willing and open to doing that. I don't, you know, as a planning commissioner, that's not our job to make sure that everybody around is aware of what's going on. However, at this particular meeting, I do want to make those homeowners also aware of what could be done today. And I'm not sure that you would or wouldn't agree whether what is being proposed is better than what is being, you could be, you know, could be built on that site right now or not. I will tell you that as this sits, and with the decrease in units per acre, and height restrictions, and everything that the developer's done, it would appear to me to be more appealing than what could be done there today.
One last comment.
Well, in response to Mr. Ayler's comment about what we do know could be done, and I think it's very unfortunate that our board did not invite the residents to speak with the developer. But this issue, that whole area, Lake Ridge, and I don't know about the fountains, but I do know Rivendell, and Hunter's Place, we have experienced a real uptick in break-ins. And the issue, in my opinion, with our neighborhood and the surrounding neighborhoods, is that we are going to establish ourselves an atmosphere for transancy. That's the big issue. If you want to put five restaurants over there, we would be thrilled. If you want to put a Goodyear across from the Firestone, we would be thrilled. It's that you are putting more residents, total unknowns, no accountability, no responsibility. They can come and go. Leases are broken every day. Foreclosures are walked out on every day. It is because of this particular use that the homeowners are very upset. And I myself did not know until I walked in here that our president was leaving. Or I would have been much more prepared. I was counting on him to represent the feelings that I knew from the petition signatures that I had collected, and were totally opposed to this. Thank you.
I appreciate that. I would like, we don't applause, have applause in a meeting like this. It's not appropriate. Displays of any kind, actually, are not appropriate. What I wanted to say about apartment dwellers is, we can't classify all of them as anything. I've lived in an apartment. Many, most everybody here has probably lived in an apartment. Most of us have done it responsibly. Yes, there are some transient issues in some apartment projects, same in some neighborhoods. But to characterize people before they even show up and suggest that they're not, they be appropriate to live next door to me, is, I think, inappropriate to do.
I have been an apartment dweller, and I agree with what you're saying, but $800 to $11 a month pretty much sets the tone. Thank you.
The commissioners?
And I want to say that, I want to thank the people who took the time to come down here today and express your views. And I don't want you walking out of here thinking that you're not being heard. I think that, although we walk a kind of fine line with respect to issues like property value and classifying whole groups of people as undesirable or whatever, I think it is not too far of a stretch to say that we understand that R4 housing brings with it a myriad of issues, and that you may choose not to be thrilled to have it near you. I totally get that. From our standpoint, though, what you have here is a really big chunk of raw land that has very intense zoning on it currently. And while you say that if you wanted to put a whole row of restaurants there, you'd be fine with that, and I think there might be other people who would not be fine with that. And from our standpoint, the one is much more intense a use. A commercial use like C3 is much more intense a use than any residential use, even in R4. What we've been told here today in terms of what this developer has done, as far as trying to ameliorate the concerns that have been expressed to him, are exactly the things that we would tell any developer to go do. From our point of view, this is a downzoning of this property. It is a lessening of the intensity of this use. And while I understand that it, you know, reasonable minds can differ about whether it's a good thing or a bad thing, I understand that. I don't want you to walk away feeling like we're not listening to you, because I totally get your concerns, and I'm very glad that you took the time to come down here today and express them. I think that your developer has sort of invited you to continue to communicate with him by letting you know that this company is developed, is established in the community and intends to hold this property as a long-term investment. So, I don't think it's a question of them disappearing overnight. If there are specific use issues with respect to the use of this land as you move forward, I think you would be well-advised to communicate them to him. But having said that.
Mr. Chairman, can I just ask the developer just one question?
Sure.
Mr. Graves, will you, will your company be the managers of these units, or do you have outside management source?
There is a management company that has a number of other apartment complexes in the metro area. As a matter of fact, they're in the process of construction in one right adjacent to Brookhaven and Norman. Brookhaven and Norman is the established, well-established neighborhood on the west side, right behind the home of Don Siz, the developer of the entire parcel. So, well-controlled properties, there's.
Could the residents be able to visit some of the properties they manage and maybe get an idea?
I think that would be just fine. Sure.
Okay, that's all. Thank you.
Any other discussion, commissioners? Action? Todd?
Again, I think I'm, maybe my point wasn't clear. I just, I just can't find anything that is, that would cause me to not want to push this forward. And having said that, that means I'm going to move approval.
Chairman, I'll second that. I'll also note that I'm not a big R4 fan. The one thing that I find very pleasing in this particular case is how the land is already zoned. It's dense only, plus the very heavy reduction of R4 density. They've cut the density basically in half from standard R4.
And very liberal setbacks, it's.
And, yeah, there's 100 feet going around all the residential areas, limiting R4, straight R4, but still three stories, this is two. On the issue of the backyard bookends, when I looked at how these buildings are configured, I believe there's only three buildings that's there that will even have windows facing which would be 10 or 12 units. I think this is a unique R4 application.
One question for the developer is, do you agree with the TE? Excuse me, sir? The technical evaluation? Do you agree with the technical evaluation?
Best of.
There's one TE, is your question?
Yeah.
Okay, so we have a motion and a second to approve item 15. Cast your votes, and it's approved.
Item 16 is V25803. This is an application by Dusty Barn, a four-cornered construction for a variance to the subdivision regs regarding a certificate of occupancy at 11,800 Maloca Drive in Rio de Bella Edition, Board Three.
Is the applicant here?
Mr. Chairman, let me ask a question about this application. This is a variance application, I understand. What differentiates this particular request from a board of adjustment item?
Is your mic on, by the way? I can't hear you. Okay, just, it's me.
Board of adjustment is charged with granting variances to the zoning ordinance. This is a variance to the subdivision regulations. Your charge.
Oh, it's true. This is true.
So, Mike made a motion. Do we have a second? Motion and second to approve item 16. Cast your votes. Janice, you oppose to this? Janice, you oppose to this?
I'm kidding. Okay.
Okay, items 17 and 18 have been continued. Item 19 is a public hearing for ordinance amendments regarding the brick town urban design guidelines.
Is there any discussion, commissioners? Are we ready to just go? Move approval to propose amendment. Okay, have a motion and a second to approve the amendment, item 19, cast your votes. That's approved.
And item 20 is to introduce an ordinance, full-time for public hearing on December the 13th regarding regulation amendments for the downtown design district.
Need a motion to introduce and set for hearing? So moved. Do you have a motion and a second to approve item 20? Cast your votes, that's approved. That's it for public hearing items. Planning Commission committees, planning commission members. We need to adopt the schedule of regular meetings for the planning commission for the next year, 2013, January of 2014. Last year, the commission elected to have one meeting in June, two appear to be scheduled here. We elected to have two meetings in August, there was no quorum for the second meeting in August.
I prefer to skip August and June personally. That matters to me.
Well, we did.
Obviously, we did, so it doesn't, doesn't really matter.
Well, what's the sentiment with respect to June?
Well, I really, I really preferred the one meeting in June, because that's just, you know, the whole calendar's changing, and that's when my kids are out of school, and my kids are back in school in August, because it's normally easily easier for me to be here in August.
Well, you and Buck have that issue.
Yeah. The rest of us are going to...
Does anyone have one?
Todd does.
Todd, do you have that same issue?
I don't care either. It doesn't matter to me. I mean, but...
We'll try again.
Don't we go one in all three months?
That's the summer months. That's the summer months.
So do you want to do one in June, one in July, and one in August? Is that how you want to set the schedule?
Okay.
Let's say, Nick?
That makes sense. It'll be even, that will be summer.
Okay.
It's fine with me. Can we do that, Dan?
We're going to delete the second meeting in June, the second meeting in July, which we already had deleted.
There's not a second meeting.
And the second meeting, there will not be a second meeting in either July or August.
Yeah, so we're deleting...
The only deviation will be...
27, 27.
Exactly.
Right.
And the related preliminary plat deadlines to that meeting.
What about September? Spring break and all that stuff.
Don't get me started.
Well, if we do that in September and October, then November and December, we'll have one anyway, and we will take a half a year off.
And we eliminate the 27th meeting in June, do we keep the 13th, or do we move a different date?
Keep the 13th as it, it's the second Thursday of the month, which would be the normal schedule.
Right.
So all we'll do to alter this is to drop the second meeting in June and the related preliminary plat deadline.
Yep.
For that meeting.
So moved, so moved.
Okay, we have a motion and a second to approve the schedule as amended. Cast your votes, and that's the new schedule for the next year. Planning Department, Russell?
If you'd count any more meetings, we'd have to catch a pie.
Oh, damn, yeah.
Now, November the 8th, next meeting, we have a study session and Urban Development Committee. Study session, we're going to look at the Convention Center site. We also wanted to do an update on Plan OKC. Now, we might push that, I think, because I think the Convention Center discussion may take a while. We're also going to give you a copy of the community appearance survey so that you could take that as well, which is informing Plan OKC. So I'm not quite sure what the agenda will be at this point. As you, on the UDC, we have the PUD ordinance, we have one of two hearings, one of two meetings on that.
As relates to the Convention Center site discussion and the continuance that we did, at least as respects what my motive was, which was to begin some sort of a dialogue among consultants, the public, council members and so forth, to bring about planning for these items that intersect Convention Center, Park, Boulevard, light rail, so that these people are talking to each other about how what they do relates to the other projects that are physically connected, so they're not doing these things in silos anymore. I think we've done as much in that respect as we can.
And that meeting will occur tomorrow morning, actually, between...
Consultants.
Between all the consultants, yes.
And any other issues that other commissioners may have had?
One thing I might mention too, and if I'm not mistaken, I think my term on the Board of Adjustment comes up in 13, the first part of 13, and somebody needs to...
Somebody needs to do that, huh, Jim?
I mean, that's, you know, that's a lot of, that's a lot of Thursdays, I tell you.
Mike's done it, Nick's done it, I've done it.
I can't do both.
I've done that a lot.
I've done Brick Town too.
A lot of town, or a lot of times.
But you're not selling it very well.
Yeah. By ordinance, there is supposed to be a planning commissioner on the Board of Adjustment, just, so someone is going to...
Board of Adjustment meetings, though, are far shorter than planning commission meetings. Generally, generally, other than the Sandridge deal.
It is possible to get into a long one.
It is possible.
Okay, any other items, Commissioner?
Also, on the 19th, we have our Citizens Advisory Team meeting, that's on November 19th at 3:30, I believe.
Yes, that's correct.
The CAT, Citizens Advisory Team meeting, November 19th, that Monday.
What is that?
For Plan OKC.
I won't be there, and I won't be at the next planning commission meeting, I'll be out of town. Both will be shorter. Both.
I think we should make some media appointments.
Motion to adjourn, and we're adjourned.